For May 20th, the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. Um, this is a work session, so we do not take public comment this work session. We welcome the public. We will not be voting on anything at this, at this work session. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah and let her introduce Ben and Tanya, who I think are our main presenters today.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. This was a work session that we had originally scheduled back. PC, as I like to call it, pre-COVID. And I think it was one of the first work sessions that we had to reschedule. Just not sure about attendance and how to have the meeting. This represents a tremendous amount of work from the amount, from planning and zoning staff to simply even compile this information and to analyze it and to analyze it fully. So I want to start off by saying I'm very grateful to Tanya and Ben for their work here in this place. And I, I think this is a fascinating conversation full of a lot of really chalk, full of a lot of really interesting details, if you like, planning and zoning and CUPs. So I'm excited to see what they have to share. I'm hopeful that this will be a really good informative conversation for us as we think about land use planning in the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ben.
Okay. And as I start the presentation, if you would like to jump in anywhere throughout the presentation, feel free to jump in and ask questions. It, I've gone through it a few times. It takes about half an hour to, to just go through the slides. So I'm going to switch to my screen now. So we're going to kick off with the introduction here. So this is an, let me move these. This is an overview of home business, agritourism, CUP, and site plan activity in Douglas County. We're going to review the numbers and types of businesses operating, review the great work being done, and some of the challenges faced. Hopefully, we'll gain a better understanding of enterprise in the county and review ways to support regulation and add value for those already complying with county regulation and review how our regulations control growth and community impact. We'll look at ways to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of Douglas County rural entrepreneurs as well. So first, we're going to jump into the home-based businesses. We have two types, type one and type two home business permits that serve the small and growing businesses in the county. These permits enable the county to administratively set standards and guidance for small-scale ventures. This model funnels into agritourism, conditional use permits, and site plans as businesses grow over time. So our first one here is type one. Type one businesses are completely enclosed within the dwelling and may have up to two non-resident employees. They must fall under an allowed type one use. So these are just two examples of art that's created by two of our permitted type one businesses in the county. And then we go right to the type one uses. Excuse me. There's just a broad range of artists, craft makers, cabinet makers, photographers, decorators, a broad range of office types that are available for people to work from home. And then this is just a quick breakdown of the permitted home businesses for type one. We can see the construction is, is the number one most commonly requested home business for type one. Then we have office and commercial arts. And then this is just a couple of examples of websites from our type one home businesses. And then we're going to go to type two home business. They are completely within the dwelling or an ancillary building that is ancillary to the primary residence. A type two may have up to four non-resident employees. The space allotted in the accessory building must not exceed 3,600 square feet. And this is an example of one of our type two home businesses. It's an online bookseller. So first, we have just an example of one of the fabricators in our county and just a sample of some other work that they do. One of the fascinating things of going through all of these and exciting is just getting to see the broad range of things that are being created by people in our county. This is an example of two websites that are type two home businesses have. Allowed uses, so with the type two, they have all the type one allowances as well as repair of ag equipment, assembly of mechanical devices, automobile repair only in an enclosed building, welding and machine shops, and contractors and equipment and material storage, both only within an enclosed building. Except for agricultural equipment, there's no exterior storage or repair allowed. And this is where we, this is critical as far as trying to help control the, the size and scope of these. Because they're administratively approved, it's important to minimize that exterior storage because after that, it jumps up to a CUP. This is our, our use chart for type two. And again, construction, so between the two, construction is by far the most common permitted home business in the county. So as we're going through the renewals every year, January through March, we're, we're looking especially at the type twos to see if they've outgrown their, their capacity to be administratively approved. And we often see these aerials that really make you wonder what, what's going on. But we, we learned through looking at these that it's just good to remember that this is just one moment in time. This was from 2018. And once I got to this site, it was a very clean, well-cared-for property. And he explained like what was going on at that time, and it wasn't like that for very long. So some of them may be in disrepair, but it, we try to approach them all from the standpoint of we just caught them at one moment. And that, that review also allows us just to, to make sure that, that they're being a good neighbor. So home business benefits allow the property owners to drastically reduce overhead costs. We have a number of businesses that we've contacted that want to know why they should go through this process, but being able to work from home does greatly reduce that, that overhead cost and provides a pathway for them to work from home. Diminishes zoning violations through oversight and proactive regulation. Prevent business operations in the floodplain, controls road impact by limiting the size, and has an environmental impact by directing business use to appropriate zoning locations. And it implements neighbor protections by limiting the type and size of an operation. This is an example of some of the violations we come across while we're reviewing these. The one on the right is one that we're still working on. We're waiting to get a, a site visit to, to discuss a path forward there. So through this home business review, and one of the major needs and requests that we hear are more options for auto storage and auto repair. A lot of our citizens, from what we're hearing, are being pushed out of the city due to high prices, $10, $12 a square foot. And they want to be able to work from home, but it, it's just not a possibility with our current regulations. Lawn care operations and options under the new regs. Under the new regs, we also have equipment storage as a CUP. That's because of so many truck storage CUPs that have come through in the last few years. And then we just need time for thorough review, enforcement, outreach, and education.
And, and Ben, before you
Sure.
Right in, I guess one thing I wanted to say about that is that, you know, I think there's a number of ways that this conversation could go. I, one of the things that we take a lot of pride on is preserving the, the rural character of the unincorporated area. I don't want sections of the unincorporated area to just turn into commercial business districts that really should be more appropriately put in a city. So I think the notion that folks aren't, aren't, don't feel like they can cost-effectively operate inside the city limits is only one consideration for, for Douglas County when looking at this. And, and in some ways, maybe more informative for us to have conversations like that with our city partners about, hey, you know, the unintended consequence of some of the things happening is that these businesses are moving out to the county where they are not on sewer systems, where they may not have some of the other, you know, access to, to reliable fire protection. I shouldn't say reliable because I do think our town should do an excellent job of providing reliable fire service, but if they need, you know, specialty fire services, that doesn't happen outside of the city limits. So there's a number of considerations here that need to be taken into account. And, but what Ben's reporting on is what we're seeing, seeing, which is this large influx of construction-related and lawn. And I shouldn't say, I mean, it's somewhat large influx of those businesses that previously used to be operational in the city.
Sure, thank you. So this is just a quick look at the last six years of home business registrations. Currently for 2020, we have 116 registered. We hope to renew the additional or, or register the additional 79. We have 195 that we hope to have renewed by the end of the year. Or, or just started. There's over 50 that are, would, would be new. So one, one part of this process was going through a list of 360 home businesses in the county that we thought might be operating. So just going through and figuring out what of those were, were operating was one part of this research, and we got that down to 50.
And of those 50, we typically contact them if we have contact information from them and send them a letter and just say, hey, we want to sit down with you. We want to meet with you. We want to learn more about your business to determine whether you should be a registered home business or not in the county.
True. And then this is just an example of utilizing a formula from the assessor's office. The average impact for 200 square foot of commercial space and residential property is 351. So just a few of the, the numbers that, that are coming in from the home business program could be around the 80,000 range. Public outreach is a, a big one that we want to work on and find ways to promote more and more as we go. A lot of these that are not registered, as we approach them, we, we find out they just didn't. They typically just didn't know. So just getting more outreach out will be really important. So next, out of all of the various permit pathways, we're going to look at agritourism. And agritourism is the intersection of agriculture and tourism when public visits rural areas for recreation, education, enjoyment, entertainment, adventure, or relaxation. Agritourism uses the rural experience as a tool for economic development. And here's the types of agritourism. Just highlight a few. We have farm markets, corn mazes, bed and breakfast establishments, horseback riding, pumpkin patch visits, ancillary retail sales. Here are a few websites of some of our agritourism businesses in the county. The purpose of agritourism, as we've mentioned already, is that it uses the rural experience as a tool for economic development. The regulations are intended to ensure public health, safety, and welfare are protected and further promote revenue on existing farms, supporting our community, and stimulating the local economy to educate and enlighten the public regarding the origin of the food they eat and the need to protect the land for future generations. Some of our goals have been to collaborate with GIS in Douglas County, GIS to create and promote a story map of Douglas County agritourism sites. The goals of the map are to inform the public, increase farm revenue, create an easy-to-navigate map, increase registration, ensuring health, safety, and welfare, supporting Plan 2040, and just to demonstrate pride in these amazing operations going on in our county. This is the agritourism map, and I can take us there real quick. And once you get here, you just scroll down. Brad Schmidt from our GIS department created this pretty early on for us. And as you scroll through it, it moves through the agritourism sites, and it moves the map so you know where, where they are in the county. And I can just, there's 11, so we can just kind of scroll through and highlight these. And then it also has a story to the side, address, and the website, if they had one. And before the stay-home order, we had reached out to a number of other agritourism operations, and there was a lot of interest in how to get signed up and potentially get on the map. So we look forward to adding a lot more over the next couple of years. Next, we're going to look at conditional use permits. Conditional use permits, or CUPs for short, are permits that require discretionary approval from the county, CUP's consent to a use not allowed by right in a particular zone. The permit application is approved under a set of conditions determined through a transparent and public process. This is a pretty comprehensive list of the possibilities for CUPs. We broke it into four categories, agriculture and residential, commercial, community facilities, and industrial. We have about a third of our CUPs are related to public utilities and towers of some kind. So a lot of the approval criteria that we focus on is the zoning and uses of property nearby, character of the area, suitability of subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted, extent to which removal of restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property, conformance with the comprehensive plan and professional staff recommendation, whether the use will cause adverse impact to the natural environment, whether the use will cause significant adverse impacts on community facilities in the transportation network or utilities in the area.
Hey, Ben?
Yeah.
This is actually a good one. I wanted to interject here a little bit about CUPs. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna play planner for a minute because I, I am not a professional planner, nor have I played one on TV. But in my view, CUPs in the unincorporated area serve a different function than they sometimes do in an incorporated area. And I, I, I've heard planning staff talk about how CUPs allow us just to really tailor, you know, unusual or unique situations to a particular conditional use and, and tie it to that. Part of what I worry about when I look at this list is, you know, do, some of these, it makes absolute sense because of the nature of the business it is. But some of them, like, really may not need to be a whole separate CUP. But because of how we, you know, with zoning and commercial regulation, sometimes here, it's because it has outgrown a home-based business. Am I correct in that? And so that's really a different type of use for a CUP than like you would see in a city. They would come up with a different zoning classification. And that's, you know, and it would be, it'd show it on a colored map and a colored box, and you'd see where those things can happen. That doesn't happen here. These are, in some cases, these are, you know, overgrown home businesses that we need to regulate and put some structure around how they operate and where they, when they operate. But it's, it doesn't tradition, it doesn't work the exact same as it does in a city. Am I, do I, do I have that right, Tanya?
Typically, in the city limits, if you're zoned in a residential area, you don't get commercial type uses unless they're very small, like a, a Realtor who has a home office inside of their home or possibly an in-home daycare or something like that. You just don't get to be able to be an airport or have a landing strip or put up a cellphone tower or work on your automobiles in your yard or other people's automobiles, I should say. And so if that's something inside of a city limits that's wanted, they have to move to a district that has the appropriate zoning to be able to do those things. In the county, it's different because we pretty much are all agricultural and residential. We don't really have any, we do have some small in the North Lawrence area. Baldwin Junction, we have a little bit, Can't Walk a Corner, we have a little bit of commercial. But there's very, very limited commercial zoning in the county where someone could say, hey, I want to start up a business. Where should I go in the county if I want to start, if I want to work on people's diesel vehicles? And we don't, we don't have a spot for them. And so part of that, and why we haven't opened commercial zoning up in the county and, and like looked at areas and tried to decide where do we want industrial, if we want industrial in the county, or where would we want commercial and have pockets, is because if you have commercial zoning, that gives you a long, long list of things that you can do and things that you can be. So if you go in and you're a big retail nursery operator and you sell flower pots and you sell plants that you're not growing, that you're getting in from somewhere else, tropical plants or those type of things, that is probably a-okay or can be managed by neighbors. And they can be like, you know, we can really make this work. And you're going to put a list of things that, you know, they need to accommodate by. But when that store closes, then a bar could open up in that same spot. So commercial zoning gives you all of these uses that you, if you close down, you can be many other things. And then that other thing may not be compatible with that area. So that's why we've stuck really hard and fast to conditional use permits. If we are going to allow commercial in the county, either you, we, we limit that list of, of people that can apply for a conditional use permit. So, you know, if we decide we don't want salvage yards in the county or we don't want landfills or we don't want stripping of topsoil in the county, then you remove those as possible lists or possible approved uses that someone could even apply for a CUP for. Because if they're not approved items that we say you can apply for a CUP, you don't, it's prohibited in the county then. So that's really our only mechanism to control CUPs other than neighbor input and, and placing conditions.
Yeah, and, and the CUP itself as, as a planning tool is incredibly high-touch for staff. You know, as, imagine trying to, to deal with commercial businesses individually inside the city of Lawrence. Like, you just couldn't do it. So part of what is hard here is it's a tool that we ha, it's sort of the best we have, but it is incredibly time-consuming and cumbersome for, for staff to maintain, monitor, and, and deal with. Because you can't just say, hey, everything in this green square, you can do X for. And everything is customized. And so part of why I wanted some of this data was, you know, commissioners, do, are there things in here that we should, you know, if, if we're really, if we're really tied to the CUP as a tool, could we develop some regulations for like truck storage? Well, that's probably a bad example because truck storage is so varied. But let's take like, oh, you know, mobile home parks or, or a particular one and say, hey, we're going to try to be consistent in these types of CUPs county-wide. And I think we try to do that a little bit, cut-and-paste-wise, recreation facilities, I think the one I was thinking of. Like, can we, can we come up with something that's somewhat zoning equivalent, like a permitted use equivalent, that there's just less of, oh, was there this one T or I dotted on the CUP that now requires us to regulate how many, something very specific and high-touch in that? Because this is a pretty high volume of things that have to be kind of, each one has to be individually understood.
And another thing that I think is interesting that we would like a little bit of guidance from the commission on is now that we are, have a, a list of our active conditional use permits, we've, we've gone through, we think we can eliminate a certain percentage that have either expired, they never built, they never did what they had applied for 15 years ago. Once we have a list of what, which we have now, of what is really going on in the county, if, say, we get a CUP for a landscape company, and we are able to provide a ma, a map showing the locations of the landscape companies that we already have permitted through a conditional use permit, and also showing how many we have, then we could utilize that as a tool in thinking, do we need more? Are we at a limit? You know, is this something that the public is, is begging for and needs more services with? Or is this something that, that, that maybe we, maybe, you know, they're spread all over the county and, 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 and we don't need anymore in the county?
Yeah, or, or have we hit a tipping point where we're beginning to impact the rural character of that neighborhood? You know, is this, is this going, you know, that's why you hear from neighbors that are just feel so disrupted because this is their home and farm, and now it's also a truck storage facility? And, and I think that's where we get into a lot of just, just very tough property rights issues, so, and land use, so.
Yeah.
Oh, just sorry to interrupt, but Tanya, I, I think a map would be really helpful as we consider some of the, you know, are there areas of the county that are turning into commercial areas just by a high use of CUP? I think that's what you're talking about. And then, but, and then my question would be, are there uses on here that you think we should consider? This may be a loaded question, but that you think we should consider, thinking about before others? I heard Sarah sort of dance around truck storage a little bit there, and we've had a lot of those come to us. Do you have recommendations on which one of these? You know, we make grandfather those that currently have CUPs in, but, but, you know, do you have suggestions there?
That, that's tough. You know, I, I think that my biggest concern would not be with the, you know, ones that we currently have, but we do have quite a number of ones that are operating illegally. So they've possibly moved from the city limits, closed down their business. They brought all of their trucks that they work on, all of their equipment that they work on out there. They have employees there. And then now we are in a big predicament because there is no use for them that we can even fit them into. So they're a violation, but there's not a category with the conditional use permits that give them an avenue to be able to do everything they'd like to do. So like, we have one that had a diesel truck repair business in the city limits. They didn't notify our office, moved the location out to the county. They also have a dog breeding comp facility, and that also moved to that site. So one of them, the dog breeding, we can site plan a dog kennel, and we can go through the conditional use permit for the dog kennel. So they may get one of the items that they thought that they'd be able to do all of them, but the other one, we just don't even have a category. So they're just a violation hanging out there that, you know, ends up where most likely going to the attorney's office and then on from there. And so those are the ones that I feel like put us in a, in a predicament just because there is no option for them, and they didn't necessarily do their homework ahead of time. We also have some businesses that started out very small scale, and they have grown huge, several landscaping businesses and really have, they, they, they've inundated their entire lot, you know, and have 15 to 20 commercial trucks operating from that site, 15 to 20 employees coming in and out of there. When they were originally approved, they started out as a home-based business. Or maybe they didn't even register as a home-based business. So now we're trying to figure out where do you fit? And you might be too big even for a conditional use permit. And so at that point, it's pretty scary for those applicants to think about, I might have to relocate or, we're, we've, we've got the violations pretty cleaned up, but now we're down to the ones where they're going to be pretty complicated. I do appreciate the fact that we don't have everything compiled in a CUP, so someone doesn't have a false sense that they would get an approval and be able to just move out to the county, and, and it'll be okay, and they, they'll get it. So I'm comforted by that. I think there are some uses in here that could be eliminated that are probably the most impactful to neighbors and that are the hardest ones to regulate. But often with that, the hardest ones that we regulate But often with that, the hardest ones that we regulate are the, the biggest group of people. So construction's tough. We have, you know, contractors, we have electricians and stuff that are operating from their home. And they have, you know, four or 10 employees or 15 coming in and out of there, parking their car in the morning and then deploying from the site. And it's a lot of traffic and it's, um, it's a nuisance to the neighbors. So I do think there are some that, um, you know, we could weigh that take up the most time and are, are the hardest to regulate. But I don't know that the answer is to just not provide the option. I, I don't know necessarily what the answer is, you know, in that situation. It's, it's really a tough call on conditional use permits. Another kind of point of conditional use permits, I think we've got around 300 of them. We didn't even know that, you know, starting out. And we're really complaint driven because we haven't in the past had the staff to be able to actually manage those administrative reviews. So when the commission, you know, says, we want you to do a one year review on this or we want zoning encodes to do a five year review on this or a 10 year review. That's not been done in the past because there just hasn't been staff to be able to keep up and manage that stuff. And so now I think we're, we're getting our, we're getting better where we have been now. Our staff is, is competent and capable and willing and eager and, and helpful and, and, and wants to provide education, wants to help the citizens. But that's a big dilemma that we have, you know, 300 CUPs that we really need to start at square one and go through what they were approved for, do an onsite inspection and verify whether they're even compliant with their CUP at all.
Yeah.
Yeah. So coming back to this, this chart, this is the, the 365 CUPs. This is before any cleanup has been done. Just to give us a, a, you know, ground zero look at how many there are before some of them start to get removed hopefully. These are conditions that we review that help minimize a lot of disturbance in the county. So we're looking at dust palliative, road repair, lighting signage compliance, site plan compliance, renewals, parking, screening, drainage, state permits and licenses, hours of operation and noise. And then like we talked about, it does get tailored for different CUPs. Let's see. It's real, really great for neighbor protection, especially without these, they wouldn't be getting notified. Going to jump to, this is an example of a denial. So sometimes they do get denied. This was one that I came across that wound up having what appears to be a positive outcome. They wanted to convert this house into a manufacturing, food manufacturing facility. And they later found this location in town where they currently reside. Here's a, a number of violation examples that have come to light through this research. This is a extensive exterior storage that's not permitted. Here's two different topsoil stripping operations, we think in locations where there were previously topsoil removal approvals. But it just looks like it's continuing. Here's two truck storage violations. And these are very well screened within wooded areas. And here's another topsoil stripping. This is an unpermitted lawn care landscaping business. So with 365 CUPs to review, we've so far found 56 to be expired. 13 appear to be violations, most likely more. Out of those 146 are duplicates from 56 properties. That's mostly because there might be a tower in a public utility. CUP on the same one, or there might be additions to those towers and they kind of stack up. So without those, there's 276 CUPs to work through. So far we have 134 flagged that we think should be closeable. And from there, we're going to go to our fourth permitting pathway, which will be site plans. So site plans really allow the county to set conditions on the property and ensure the proposed development meets zoning standards for the district it is located in, such as industrial. Site plans are a scaled drawing that show the structures, proposed uses, landscaping, septic, parking, lighting, easements and compliance requirements are also documented there. This is an example of a site plan. This is just one that I pulled out from Clinton Cove Storage. On each site plan there, we should be able to find our general notes that show some of the conditions that were set by the commission when it was approved. This is a, a chart of site plan uses after 2009. So since 2009, most of them have been industrial or like churches or towers or tower additions. So next steps with site plans, there are 261 documented site plans, 143 before 2009. So site plans prior to 2009 are going to require more extensive research to complete our database. And we have a pretty good database after 2009. All site plans will require a review to ensure that the uses match what is site planned. And a thorough review of site plans has started. I'm over three quarters of the way through all of the CUP files and a lot of those site plans are, are in there. And I'm trying to connect them as we go. But we still need to go through the site plan files and just verify that they're being used as they were planned. So this leads us to our, some of our goals and I'm sure there'll be more to come as we work through this process. But just demonstrate the scope of enterprise in the county. And thank you for taking the time to, to meet with us and just kind of start to absorb this. I think it'll be really helpful. Develop processes to manage approved conditions. So each CUP site plan on business comes with a myriad of conditions. And just having the time to create new internal tracking tools or review will be really helpful. We want to remedy more than 50 out of compliance home businesses. This includes unregistered as well as registered lawn construction vehicle repair operations with burgeoning exterior work and storage. And we want to review or we want to remedy more than 100 phased out CUPs. And we want to connect site plans with parent CUPs. Right now they're kind of thought of as two individual entities, but a lot of site plans correlate with CUPs. And they're not connected as far as our, our tracking. We want to remedy more than 80 zoning violations that we've found so far through the, this research. Review and update outdated site plans. Implement a tracking system for CUPs and site plans with road maintenance conditions. As I've been going through these, I've been looking closely for any, any time that they'd agreed to do any kind of road maintenance, whether it's, whether it's adding the palliative or, or agreeing to help pay for road repair. And I have a list, I, I think there's nine so far on my list that had agreed to various, you know, various agreements to, to help with that. We want to partner with GIS, which we've started, but we'd like to have a map of our home businesses, at least for internal use. And CUP, the CUP map does exist and it's, it's active. But it's our, all the old list. So having an updated CUP list or a map would be great, especially if we could, you know, click different categories and it would pop up the different categories throughout the county. Establish the tools necessary to achieve compliance and find ways to add incentive for registered enterprise. And incentives lead to increased compliance, business income, tax revenue and community connection. That leads right into needs that we've been talking about, just time to get through these. Support for that allowance for industrial type enterprise in the county is certainly something that may be worth considering. Staff for reviews, inspections, meetings and developing tools. File review and cleanup, which we're, we've been working through a lot during this stay home. Consolidate those files as well. And then enforcement is going to be a major endeavor. And once we get these cleaned up, just working through the next phase and then closing the ones that we can. Future ideas, we'd love to eventually have a home based business list that we could possibly provide to the public. They might not know that they have a craft maker, a cabinet maker, an artist right down the road from them that they can commission work from or go get their haircut. That might, might be right down the road and they don't even know. So it could help those home businesses and also the general public. We've already got this map developed, the agritourism map, thanks to, to Brad. And then possibly just entertaining the idea of maybe eventually someday having a trade show where we could bring all of the, the various businesses together, possibly at the, at the fairgrounds where they could have a table and show their art or, or advertise their lawn business or whatever they do. You know, it could be a, a great benefit for them. And then just continuing to work on increasing our outreach. So people are aware of the, the benefits and why it's important to get their businesses registered and do it the right way. So this is a lot to take in and just wanted to end it with knowing that we do have a lot to celebrate. There, you know, zoning regulations are, are working, there's a lot to work on, but it's clearly making an impact. And we definitely have a vibrant entrepreneurial spirit that's thriving in the county. So thank you for listening and if you have any questions, we can talk about that.
I don't have any questions, but Tanya, but I would really like to say thank you. This is a lot of really great information and nice, clean, organized presentation. So thank you.
Thanks.
So I, I have, um, well, what, echo Michelle's comment, I'm so grateful to you guys. This was a lot of hard work and detailed digging, digging and, just getting lots of information organized that has been hard, hard to put together for a long time. So thanks, thanks so much for really digging in like that. I think one of the things you bring up is a big question for us. And maybe even one that'll come up in the not too distant future. And that, I don't know how, I'd be interested to know what folks think about how we go about that conversation of what industry or weather industry, that kind of zoning or that kind of, you know, setting aside for industrial businesses. How do we make that determination? Because it's so important for our tax base, but also, you know, really impactful on rural character and neighboring properties. And it's just a hard, it's a hard topic. So I, how Sarah or someone, well, I mean, Tanya, how, how would you go? How would you put that idea out there and work on it?
Well, I, I think that really comes down to me to a fundamental question about infrastructure. So part of the reason why we move from residential and ag uses, what is because of the infrastructure that Douglas County, unincorporated Douglas County already has. My concern with if, if there were, and, and from the economic development work where I sit on, it really comes down to, do we have the infrastructure to, to support that? And without sanitary sewer, you know, particularly. And then in some cases for industrial like fire service. You know, I, I think, I don't feel like the unincorporated area is well suited for that. And I think it's important that, you know, we work in partnership with cities to make sure that they have space inside, you know, that those businesses that we sing, sing from the same sheet music in terms of these certain types of businesses belong in a city limits because there are services that they need and can receive there. It's my whole kind of Maslow's hierarchy of cities and counties, you know, that, that, that things that need intensive, intensive infrastructure belong in places that can provide intensive infrastructure. And, and the county's not really designed to do that.
Well, I think that, I mean,
What I worry about more is the trip, is the, is the, like, I want to say like the straw that broke the camel's back. Where is, you know, where, okay, you fix your own cars. Now you fix your neighbor's cars. Now you got, you know, three hoists and 25 employees. Now you start selling cars. Now you, you know, when have you grown to the point where you really don't belong here anymore? Because you're, you know, you're causing, you don't fit in anymore. And you're, and it causes disruption for neighbors and for the environment and the character. But now so much is invested. So, you know, so then it makes it hard to sort of ask somebody to relocate. And I, that's more my concern about, we have to just be cautious about that as we think about CUPs and agritourism and home based businesses is, you know, when is that tipping point going to happen? Where you really need, you need, you know, you need more infrastructure than what the, what this unincorporated area can provide for you.
And it does seem like our, just kind of as planning for future growth of the community and the county, as these, you know, construction sites and automotive repair. And we, we've had a couple of businesses along Mass Street contact us to operate out of the county, into the county. I think as, you know, the ebb and flow of business is happening, one option, if we say, you know, absolutely, you know, industrial is not something that the county wants to support or something that, you know, doesn't have the infrastructure in place and, and it's ready to accept something like that. It could be something that maybe we could partner with the city to create some type of park that's part in the county, part in the city, or some type of industrial location that would be really close to the city limits that would help get people in a properly zoned area where it would be managed, it would be platted, it would be designated specifically for that. Cause the hard part is knowing that there's nowhere, other than just say you go to the city limits. There's nowhere to, to put some of the folks.
That's, yeah. So thanks. That's a helpful conversation that I think we have a lot more to talk about. But definitely I'm glad to hear your thoughts. And so mostly I just want to really commend you all in a, you know, a near and dear to my heart is the agritourism, agribusiness site. It's not just beautiful, but it's really useful and it's been wanted for a very, very long time. And now, and now we have it. So kudos to you guys. And I, I noticed that there's a particular farm that's not listed on it that I think we'll, we'll have to work on that. So. But thank you. It's a lovely thing. And I think getting the home business directory and kind of thinking about that in the same way will be really good.
I, I'm just sort of interested in, I think that this is part of the reason that we have a Lawrence Douglas County Planning Department. You know, it's sort of this push between, you know, when someone brings something or something comes available, we should be looking in the city to place that business whenever possible. I mean, that our default shouldn't be the county. And part of having a county, city planning department is that they can direct them towards the right place to use that. You know, I, I share my commissioner's admiration for all the work and we need to be in diagnosis. But at some point we have to start activating the work that we're doing and saying, okay, now what decisions are we willing to make? And I think Plan 2040 sort of sets us up for that work plan. And, and how do we start having those conversations? You know, is it, I think when we filled the South Lawrence traffic, you know, when the South Lawrence trafficway got completed, I think it's probably not surprising to see more business start to go out to the county. As Plan 2040 sort of draws some lines around the city. We are, we, I expect that we'll see more entrepreneurship migrating out to the county. And I just think we have to have a plan that either pushes it back to And I just think we have to have a plan that either pushes it back to the city or gives them some rules to, to, to follow. My question though is, I can, and we've seen it happen, whether it's plan commission or county commission, where these businesses start, just as you described, Tanya, they're fixing their car, they're fixing their neighbor's car, and then all of a sudden, you know, they're a operating business. Is there any way to monitor that at all with sales tax or things like that that we could? I mean, how do we know how much business they're taking in? No one has an answer to that question. And that's okay. I mean, that might be fun.
No, I, I think it's, I think that's an area where, you know, what, now that we have a handle on who we have and once we kind of get a handle on who's expired and, and we know who we're dealing with, I think if it's something the commission wants is to have more conversations about true volumes and, you know, sales tax or traffic, those kinds of things. I think that's something we could evolve into that next conversation about is, you know, is this appropriate? You know, and we, we always try to walk this line of letting people have a little bit more flexibility to do what they, what they can do with their property, but also trying to just make sure that, that it's, it's just because your neighbors haven't complained, if it's inappropriate, that, that, that there's some sort of conversation about it. To, to your first point, what I would love to do with this presentation and something Tanya and I have talked about is I'd love to get this in front of the, the planning commission to have that conversation about this sort of high-level conversation about what we see is happening in the unincorporated area and get some feedback from them, particularly as a result of Plan 2040. You know, with tightened annexation boundaries, I, I worry about some of this because I think we need to relook at that tier, you know, that kind of border zoning and where, and if it's going to be so much harder for the city to annex land, that's going to impact these things that have traditionally really developed on fringes of communities. You know, that's where industrial developed. That's where some of it more like land-intensive commercial spaces developed. And, and I think we need to be in concert with them that, you know, if, if we're not going to annex, some of these things are going to get pushed out to the county and that's really not what we want in many cases. It's really not, you know, if it's not a really home, farm, agri-related business, like it's, it's difficult to, you know, I, I think of, you know, ideally, these folks are closer to cities. That's where they're doing their work. You know, all these landscape companies come into the city to do the landscaping. You know, so it's more traffic on county roads, you know, and, and I think it's, I think it's just an informative conversation we really need to have with, with them now that they're through 2040 and to try to get some attention on just making sure that we're working together well.
Well, I know that planning commission does have work sessions and it would be good and, and I'd be happy to just attend and listen to, to their response and, and see how we might move something like that forward. I know Commissioner Thelma and I spent a lot of time on Plan 2040 talking about these issues and, and sort of the conflicting values between wanting to draw lines around some annexation boundaries and how that impacts the city's work, but also wanting to protect our, our rural communities from the kind of growth that sort of seems like we may be experiencing here out in the county.
I think, I think that'd be great. And I feel hopeful that we could actually have that conversation now because so so many of these threads are finally, you know, about ready to be pulled together. I think these ideas have been out there for a while and concerns, but we're like Patrick said, we've been gathering information and getting our stories straight. But at this point, it feels like we have the, a lot of the right information and the right team in, together to, to maybe push this, push this forward. So I would really, I think that'd be great, Patrick. To, you know, if, and Sarah, if, if we can get the planning commission engaged and get the city engaged on this.
Well, thank you, Tanya and Ben. We really appreciate all your work on this. It's a ton of work. I mean, and a very nice presentation as well. Really good. And so thank you for all that work. If there's any other questions or comments, we'll take those now and otherwise we'll adjourn into our 5:30 business. All right. Doesn't look like we have any questions. We'll see everybody again at 5:30.